I call the Apache Junction City Council meeting to order. The pledge will be led by Councilmember Evans after the prayer by Councilmember Waldron.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet as a city council in a free society. We ask for your guidance as we deliberate the business of our city and as we set aside our personal agendas and do what's right for all of our residents. Wrap your protective hand around our military members and our first responders as well as your family that they all return safely. In the Lord's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson? You're not going to be here?
He should be here shortly.
Okay, then I'll enter him when he comes in. Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
Councilmember Waldron?
Here.
Six members present. Do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
We have a motion on the consent agenda.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that the fiscal year 2018, 2019 city council work plan be adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Okay, we have recognition of donors and Heather?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Heather Patel with Development Services. This evening is the quarterly presentation of donors to the Friends of Apache Junction and various city programs. So I'm just going to go through that list. We do have two donors who have met the criteria to get a photo taken with the mayor and one of them has asked to speak, so we'll get to that one in a minute. So again, these are different organizations and people who have donated to the Friends of Apache Junction this last quarter. Okay, so for our DARE program, this is keeping all of our children safe and out of drugs. We would like to thank the Apache Junction Unified School District employees. For Paws and Claws Care Center and various programs for the animals down there, we'd like to thank Jean and Edith Berry, Becky and Sydney Gardner, Charles and Constance Clement, Kim Tom- Thomasick? Okay. Olga Nolan Trust and Frida J. Warren Living Trust. And for community outreach through our police department, we'd like to thank the Apache Junction Walmart Supercenter and Glenda Kirk. And for public art in our community, we'd like to thank Matt Nichols, Arizona Crane, and Merrill Orr. For our summer reading program, we'd like to thank Mr. Rich Sturba, who does want to come up and say a little something.
Mayor and council members, I want to take this opportunity to let you know there's been a change in my life, but I will never forget Apache Junction. I now have a fiancee and I'm going to spend half of my year in Hawaii where she lives.
Ooh!
But I will still be doing the same thing for Apache Junction because this is my home and you are the people that I love and will take care of. So I'm going to be gone for part of a year and I hope not forgotten. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Rich.
Do they have Rangers in Hawaii?
I don't know. You know what? I may have to find out though.
Yeah, they will now. Right?
Yes.
Yes, they will now.
Very honestly, this is off the record, but I really am excited about this and staying with my community.
And congratulations.
He'll have to start one out there.
And then next, under our Neighborhood Revitalization Program, we want to thank the Allstate Foundation and Sherry Scholl. She gets a picture taken. I don't know if she wants to say anything this evening.
No.
Okay, so just sort of a recap. Since November of 2016, we have had 948 donors donating about $387,257 for 38 different projects that have been supported in the community. So all of these donors definitely are making a difference, and so we want to say thank you to all of them. And then the mayor, you wanted to say something?
I was going to say ordinarily in the past, we've always had Roger Hacker do this, and Roger recently retired, and we wanted to thank him once again for all of his service. And Heather is now doubling up on that, even though he has come back a little bit part-time, but we are going to have to wean ourselves away because he is going to be leaving, so. And also, Merrill Orr was invited to come here. He's who donated the Kachina statue, and he's so humble, he doesn't really want any credit for it. He just wanted to do the right thing and donate it, and I wanted to thank him in person for taking the time. He had months in building that thing and everybody that got that put up. It was an amazing community effort to get that up there, so I wanted to give him a special thanks as well. Announcements and current events? Let's start on this end.
Okay, well, I along with the rest of the council went to the League of Cities Conference last week, and all of us went to about five different sessions, all of which were very interesting. And I went to an extra session that was the Arizona-Sonora Region Mega-Region Meeting. It was extremely interesting. I knew that Mexico was a trading partner with us, but I did not realize that last year there were $15 billion of trade between Arizona and Mexico. And some amazing statistics came out of it. But basically, this meeting this year was to inform us as to the winner of the election in Mexico. A less than five-year-old political party swept the country. They have the Congress, they have the Senate, they have the governorship, they have the presidency, they have everything. So it's going to be real interesting to see what happens next down there. And also today, I attended the Economic Development Committee at MAG where they discussed education and its importance to the future. The woman from Achieve 60 Arizona, which is a program that wants 60% of all the public up to the age of 64 to have a diploma, a certification, or a license of some sort by 2030. That's a lot of folks. Right now, we're at 47%. So we've got some work to do here, folks, but it was very interesting and a nice meeting. Thank you.
One of the groups that I- one of the classes, what you call groups, classes at the League of Cities talked about different ways to promote your city. And one of the things that I had shared with our city manager was something really interesting that Glendale was doing to reach out to their community members and their residents. They have a van that they take out into the community, and it has these little captions, these little word boxes that people can use markers that are erasable, but they can write on the van different ideas and suggestions, questions and concerns. And so I thought that was kind of interesting. Councilmember Struble and I had attended last week the Pinell Partnership, and it was about tourism and talking about where Pinell County stands with tourism and how tourism is affecting the different communities in Pinell County, how important tourism is. And so as we, you know, go forward with our goals and our working agenda here in our city, I would definitely like that to continue to be a topic that we continually use. We have a lot of things to offer here in our community, even though we don't have hotels, we don't have transportation, we have other ways that we can draw people to our community through tourism, and it's a very important topic, so. It's always great to network when we go to those and learn how other cities are dealing with issues a lot, a lot the same that we have. Thank you.
First off, I just wanted to apologize for running a little late. Had my brother to pick up at the doctor's office at 6:30, and all the red lights between here and taking him home got me a little bit late. I apologize for that.
We need one of those clickers, Brian.
Yes. I'll have to work with the chief on that one.
Two different things. The first thing, this Saturday morning, 7:00 AM, we're planting in the community garden again. This is our annual planting for the whole season, 7:00 AM Saturday morning, so it shouldn't be too hot. Second of all, I also joined- start over.
You came too.
I went to the conference too. And if you ever want to know how you're doing, ask your kids what they think about how you say things or do things. So I made this short little PowerPoint, if Matt will put it up, so that I don't forget anything and that it actually makes sense what I say. The conference, the first item I went to was on the opioid crisis, which every community is suffering from. Tempe has collected a lot of data. Chandler has some programs up and running, but no one has an answer. And what I said is, where was the insurance providers? And no one's included them yet. So because I asked that question afterwards, they asked me to be on the MAG Commission for opioids. Okay, the next slide. Preparing for the 2020 census, since I've been on council, we haven't had a census. And I found this one really interesting because as of tomorrow, their hiring are ready for that census. And instead of just having to rely on someone coming to your door, you're going to be able to do it over the phone. There's going to be 20 different languages. We had questions that they could not answer yet because of litigation as far as do we count DACA people and illegals? And they couldn't answer, and they said, and hopefully by 2020, that would be resolved. But it is so important that even if you've got someone living on the back porch, they need to be counted. If they're not on the lease, they need to be counted because it's $15,000 for every person for city funding. So it's really important that we get everyone. I found that this year's conference had a lot more interesting sessions than they did the last two, I think. The next slide, short-term rentals. Councilmember Wilson and I went to, and we've got some cities that have some real problems because they've turned their regular rentals into short-term rentals. And they have both, Sedona has problems with it, Page has people living in the desert waiting for a long-term rental. So we haven't been really hit with this yet. Paradise Valley has a big problem with party houses because the homes are so big, they rent it out for the weekend, and it's what it's doing in the neighborhoods. Also, the cities, we don't really have any way of finding out who is a short-term rental. There's no lease agreement, they don't follow fall under any landlord-tenant agreements. So it's sort of not only a detriment to some neighborhoods, but it's also a loss of income for some cities. Here in Apache Junction, we recently had six mobile home parks sell to the same company out of Chicago for $42 million. That's a big group of our mobile home parks that could easily turn into this type of a rental situation. And there's nothing that you can really do about it. We don't have anything on the books about it. Airbnb does not publish the address. They put a little mark, a circle dot on a map, but it's usually up to 600 yards off. So it sort of shows where the house is, but not really. Okay, the next slide. These were just some additional ones that I attended. The ever-popular trending TPT issues and Wayfair decision. In the past, you were- we collected tax if there was a physical presence of a company. Now they're saying an economic presence, so like Amazon, Wayfair, so that cities can now- it's sort of opened the door for us on our internet sales so that we'll be able to collect tax on that. Is that the last one? Okay, thank you.
You done?
Yes.
Well, being the last one, everybody stole my thunder. No, but to follow up on everybody, the convention this month, this year was awesome. All of the seminars that we went to were awesome. But it was just the getting to know other council members and mayors around the state and commiserating would be a good word, but also understanding where they're at and being able to tell them where we're at and as far as economic growth, as far as everything that goes along with running a city. And it was just very informative to get together with those people and share stories and commiserate. But and then to follow up with Councilmember Rizzi, when we went Friday morning, one of the interesting things was that it was about tourism in Pinell County and how they are really pushing it. And they're developing videos to go out there and market our county and our cities and such. Very, very professional. They were very- showed us off. It was very- it was great to see. But one of the things that they talked about was that our state park out here had 183,000 visitors last year. That's amazing. That's a lot of people to come into this community that we really got to market to and make sure that they stay here and for other things. And so I just wanted to reread our vision statement that we developed last year. Apache Junction is a diverse community of natural beauty and heritage that offers prosperity, compassion, and forward-thinking to its residents, businesses, and visitors. That is just something that we've got to continue to build on so that when we go out and talk to the other people, they know who we are and they want to send their people here. So, thank you.
Can I just add something real quick, Mayor?
Sure.
Like Councilmember Struble had mentioned at this Pinell Partnership meeting, they put together this beautiful video, and it showcased all the different gems of each little community. I was really impressed with the gems that they had highlighted here in Apache Junction. It was very impressive. They highlighted some of our local restaurants downtown, the bull riding event. It was- they did an amazing job, and so I just wanted to add that.
You know, the city is a part of the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, and they're announcing new flights all the time. They just announced a new one that goes into the San Diego area. So for convenience, when you guys, if you have a choice in booking flights, look to our local airport first before you automatically go to Sky Harbor. You could save a lot of time and effort. Also, without a lot of fanfare, the roundabout is open and people are navigating it. It's not the big monster that everybody thought it was. When you come to the yields, that doesn't mean stop. Some people are stopping at yield. Just keep your- just keep on drifting through and it'll just- it'll just take you. Just let the roundabout flow through you and you'll get right through it. And also, tonight is our first night completely paperless. Bryant and his staff has been trying to get us to do this for years, and I was one of the main ones fighting it, and I still don't like it, but I know that it saves a lot of effort. I have a little bit of a script here, but other than that, and it saves staff a lot of time and effort, and I don't know, the savings to the cities will be in the thousands by the end of the year. So thank you for that, Bryant.
I've got new boots on, so I can wear them out in the night.
Okay. So on now to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor, Bryant Powell, City Manager. And thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. Yep, this is our first paperless agenda, and we appreciate your efforts in learning this new system. And if you have any questions, just please let us know. I am thankful for the airport as it continues to grow. I truly believe from an economic development engine, it's great to see something happening there every few weeks. I use this time as an opportunity to share with you and the public some of the neat things going on with staff, and I got the great opportunity tonight to do a couple of those. The first is in our Parks and Recreation Department. Many of you know Jill Ruett, who is a recreation coordinator in the aquatics area. She has been recognized by National Magazine as being the Aquatic Professional of the Month. So 12 of those a year get recognized in this organization and magazine, and it highlights her as teaching swim lessons and being involved in the aquatic industry for over 20 years. And she continues to work and is now our Aquatics and Fitness Coordinator with our Parks and Rec. Again, another opportunity to have us out in front in a national environment to hear the name and see us out there. You have so much to be proud of, and I think it's so important that our continued support of our great self-talk and the great things that are going on in Apache Junction are so important. So thank you, thank you for keeping that up. Matt, if you would do- bring to the desktop a slide that I saw this last week, has to do with monsoon rain totals. And what you'll notice is in Apache Junction at 4.41 inches, we had four major storms that our staff, Public Works and other staff, including our Parks and Recreation Department who have had to help out, were involved in. And on August 23rd and 24th, we had back-to-back night storms that included flooding out the football field, taking time to suspend the game and took over pretty much the northeast part of our city. We had many, many roads that were closed. In this case, both cases, Thursday and Friday night, we had a staff of seven and a staff of four each come after they've already done their shift, after everything's closed, from Public Works to come out and to work and barricade and make sure people were safe throughout the night. And then when the floods subsided and the washes went through, they take it down and clear it up, and it's- that's a 10:00, 2:00 in the morning kind of a thing. No one knows what's going on. Then we cleared up, and then they realize it's 100 and something the next day, and we're all asking them to clean up the dirt and the sand. And I just want to thank our residents and Mayor and council for being patient as we work through this triage, is what we call it, of the different areas in town that need to be cleaned up and swept up. But I want to give kudos tonight to that team of staff members who have worked diligently as we get closer to ending the monsoon season. Let's hope it's almost done. I want to also provide an update on the practice that we call half-staff. Over the years, we've had a practice of, and especially about four years ago, we received instruction that for federal recognition or information that we receive to lower the flag, we've been doing those as always. But there was a time prior to, many years ago in a prior administration, with the state government, we were getting half-staff emails saying, put up- do half-staff at like 3:00 in the afternoon, and we were having trouble getting those to happen, and then we were running staff all over. And so council said, it's okay, let's just do the federal ones. However, we've noticed over the last couple of years with the new state administration that these are coming more earlier in the day, and there's not as many of them. So we have instructed staff to go back to our prior, prior practice of all state and federal notifications. So just wanted to keep you posted on that, and as you see those, as you've done in the last couple of weeks, receiving us, sending to us emails and notifications about half-staff, it helps us as well try to work between the police department, the Parks Department, Public Works, in addition with Fire District, Social Security, Pinell County, we're all kind of one group working together. And then I'll conclude, just mentioning, Councilmember Struble mentioned this, but related to our vision statement and mission statement, we have provided for you and for many members of our department directors, business cards of our mission statement and our vision statement. I think these are fine and great for a constant and consistent reminder of what our goals are. And so with that, I'll conclude, and thank you, Councilmember Struble, for that idea, and I'll conclude my report.
And I wanted to add too, that Public Works Director Mike Weaver informed me that we have, believe it or not, as small as our community is, we have 166 miles of surface roads. And a lot of times in your neighborhood, you're wondering where the sweeper is. It's coming to you, but we have 165 other miles to get to. So just be patient. We will get to your streets and get them cleaned.
Can I just follow up on that? I'm all over the valley with my business and everything, and it's amazing what our city staff does with the people we have and the equipment that we have, because there are other cities in the valley that leave their neighborhoods in pretty bad shape for a long period of time compared to what we do. And it's very commendable that what our staff does, so.
Public hearing, these are the ones that were postponed from last time. We got three of them. They're all going to be different though, from City Clerk Kathy Connolly. Consideration of application for an interim permit, new license corporation, Series 10 liquor license for 88 Trails Corporation, 1571 West Apache Trail. Kathy?
Yes, Your Honor, I just stated, this is for the Shell Station that is on the southeast corner of Apache Trail and Ironwood. They're looking at obtaining a Series 10 liquor license, which is beer and wine. You do have reports in your packet from city staff and the Fire District, all of whom are supportive of this liquor license. And there is a representative on behalf of the applicant in the Shell Station here this evening in the event you have any questions. I do want to mention that if you look at the correspondent from Rudy Askevius, he does mention an ongoing issue with the monument sign that is located on that property.
Would the applicant care to speak? You don't have to, but if you would like to, you can. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion among us?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and the suggestion from Rudy was to, if we chose to approve this, to do so contingent upon the removal of the monument sign. So that's something we need to talk about. Whether we want to make this liquor license contingent upon that removal or whether we want to wait and see if he, if it will be removed because the last folks didn't remove it. And, uh, they had six months after they opened, they didn't remove it. So, you know, do we want it to stay there? Because it looks like it may. Maybe she would like to come address us on this. Yeah, you might, you might be just digging that sucker out right now, right? All right.
I do apologize. I did not know about this sign. I am here for Andrea Lukowicz. She is agent on the license.
Ah, okay.
Um, I have been informed that she has received a letter on it, but I personally have not talked with her regarding the sign. I can, um, talk with her tomorrow and let her know what, if that's what she puts on the sign and go from there. If you would like me to do so, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may just, I did send an email to Ms. Le, Lukowicz and she said she would talk to the owner about it. And that was the last I've heard. And that was probably about, uh, two weeks ago. Is that about right, would you say?
Probably, yeah. I, I can talk with her and find the status. Not sure.
Any more question?
Yeah, I have.
For Joel, can we, can we do that on a liquor license, do a contingency like that?
We can.
Well, I think, I think you can. Whether the liquor board receives it, they might say, okay, thank you, um, but you've approved it, so we're just going to go ahead and they may not just, I don't know if they'd even schedule a hearing if you have a contingency.
We've had that happen before.
Right.
When we put a, a contingency on a liquor license, we've had that happen.
Did they schedule a hearing?
No.
Yeah, because I think it's, it's not a denial of recommendation, so it's considered an acceptance, even though there's that condition. And I'm sure that, I think the new owner is willing. I think it is from, I've talked to Rudy, maybe Larry has more information on that, but I don't know if you do or not. Okay, yeah, so we haven't really had total communication. And there's some pretty good options actually that make the sign, the signage would be better for the, the owner actually, especially in the, the past owners, um, the options that we gave the past owners. Because it is in the right-of-way, um, and technically it is, uh, it does create city exposure in, in case somebody hits it. It's very close to one of the, the gas, gas lines.
Right on top of it, almost.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Larry, sorry. Because this was a bank foreclosure, did they come, did anyone from the people purchasing the station come in and talk to Development Services before they closed on it?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I mean, we did see activity. People were cleaning it up and then I think the license came in and, um, Rudy had mentioned this several times when it changed hands. Now, I did send a letter to the owner, to the attorney, and to the lender, copied the lender on this, that, um, we do have a sign, it's in the right-of-way and should be removed. So, I guess depending on what you do here, I mean, it can proceed, um, I hate to say start a code case, but that would be the next thing that would happen, is that it has been, uh, more than the time period allowed. Uh, so it is not only non-conforming, but now it's, um, they've been notified that it's in the right-of-way and needs to be removed.
So, has there been any work that's been done on the property other than cleanup that would require a permit?
No, it's just been painting and scrubbing and cleaning and so.
Okay. And they do have the business license?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I don't have so much, um, questions as I just have comments. And so for me, I think that, um, the sign issue is a separate issue from the, the liquor license. Um, I, I don't feel comfortable making a contingency, um, that, you know, take care of the sign issue and, and, you know, we'll, we'll agree to the liquor license. It's a separate issue and I, I think we should keep them separate. But I'm becoming more and more concerned with, um, with something that seems to be taking place here in our, in our community when it comes to, uh, businesses and how the city is, um, attempting or not attempting to be supportive to our small businesses. And it's a concern to me because the small businesses in our community are what give our community the small-town feel. Um, and I think that we need to be very cognizant of not losing that. I'm not suggesting that, um, people are given a free pass, but I want, for me, I want our city to have the mindset, um, for our little guys of how we, how we can help them through various processes. Um, this is a process that needs to be worked through. Um, the little guys are struggling and so we want the little businesses in our community. And we want to have the mindset of being supportive and how can we help our, our little people through these processes. And for me, attaching, you know, making the, the liquor license approval or denial, whichever way we decide, um, contingent upon the sign, um, it, it's just not appropriate in my opinion. I, I think we need to keep them separate. They need to deal with the city on the sign issue and we make our decision on the, the liquor license accordingly.
I want to voice my agreement with that. When these small businesses get started, they're already got an uphill struggle because they're going to be going against Circle K across the street, quick trips around town. The more, the faster they can start generating money, this costs, it's going to cost thousands and thousands of dollars to do this. Let's let them get in, get open and be making money so that they can support themselves. So, I would, I would want, we, of course, we want it to be done, but not contingent on this. That would be my opinion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I don't think that it's right to make the liquor license contingent upon it. I think this is one of those issues that I've said for a long time, that this type of thing needs to be a recorded document so that when, whether it's a small business or a big business, they know about it, that purchasing it, that that sign is non-conforming and needs to be moved. I think that's only a fair thing. But I... Krista, you and I sat on P and Z and hashed out the sign policy. That was a long, hard one. And I think we have to be fair across the board to everybody and whether they're a small business or a big business, because even Ross, we've gone through a kind of a sign issue with them. Um, there, it's on the books for a reason and it's a policy. So, I agree that it's not, it shouldn't be a part of the liquor license, but it should be moved because it really is sticking out there. So I, and I don't think the city is being mean or harsh or on them being a little business versus a big business. What's on the books is what our regulations are, is what we need to stick to.
And tonight on the agenda, we are talking about the liquor license. That would be another issue. So, I will call for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for an interim permit new license corporation, series ten liquor license for Eighty-Eight Trails Corporation, doing business as Shell, fifteen seventy-one West Apache Trail, be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Consideration of application for a new license corporation, series nine liquor store license for Circle K, number three, four, 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 at twenty-nine thirty-three South Tomahawk. Kathy Conley?
Yes, Your Honor. This is the Circle K that is next to the Carl's Jr. on South Tomahawk. Uh, they already have what is a, um, series, mathematics, whoops, here we go, a series ten liquor license. Now, what now, what now they're looking to do is get a series nine, which is a full liquor store license. Uh, in your packet, you have comments from city staff and the fire district and they're all in support of this license. Uh, I don't know if somebody is here to speak on their behalf. Okay. She is.
Would you like to speak on this? Okay, so if it comes to that, uh, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to speak on this? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion among ourselves? It doesn't look like it. So, we'll call, call for a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a new liquor license corporation, series nine liquor store license for Circle K, store number thirty-four forty-four, located at twenty-nine thirty-three South Tomahawk Road, be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Consideration of application for a new license corporation, series nine liquor store license, store number two-seven-four-one-six-four-seven. I didn't know they had that many stores. Located at two-three-four-one South Ironwood. Kathy?
Yes, Your Honor. This is similar to the one you just looked at. It's for the Circle K that's on Ironwood opposite the, uh, school district administrative office. And again, in this instance, what they're seeking is a series nine, which is the liquor store category. You may remember back in May, you looked at the same, uh, location for the beer and wine series license. Uh, again, you have comments in your packet from city staff in the fire district, all of whom are in support of this. And you do have someone here in case you have any questions.
Would the applicant like to speak on this one? Same situation. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Discussion. I'll call for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a new license corporation, series nine liquor store license for Circle K, store number two-seven-four-one-six-four-seven, located at twenty-three forty-one South Ironwood Drive, be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Presentation and discussion by Pinnell County's Office of Emergency Management. Shane?
You don't have to sit in the back row.
He hasn't been introduced yet. Then he'll be in the front row next.
We can still see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, again, Shane Kiso, Public Works Manager, and, uh, thank you for that recognition earlier for, uh, for the flood response when it comes to cleanup of streets. Uh, Public Works does more than that. As in this topic here tonight, we do take a, a helping hand with the city when it comes to planning documents with emergency management. So this topic has to do with, uh, uh, community wildfire protection. It's very much, uh, um, viable, um, topic for us. Um, I didn't know a whole lot about it about a year or so ago until I was asked to actually participate in the planning group to, uh, update this plan. Uh, but as you know, we're in Apache Junction, so we're out in that outer fringes, sort of that buffer zone in between, uh, the forests or, or desert lands and, and the cities. So, so I believe this is very relevant to us. Tonight, I'm just asking for your time for a presentation, uh, from Pinnell County and, uh, opportunity for you to, uh, ask any questions that you might have. I plan to be back in, in two, three weeks with the accompanying resolution, asking for a consideration of support as well as adoption as a planning document, much like what we did with the hazard mitigation plan over the years that you've seen me up here before discussing with you. And tonight we are lucky to have, uh, we did not ask, but, uh, the Pinnell County Office of Emergency Management offered to make the short presentation for you. And we actually have the Pinnell County Emergency Manager Chuck Komet here tonight to do that. Be opportunity for you to get to know him, um, ask any questions that you may have and for him to get to know, know us. So I'll invite Chuck up at this time.
So we're not going to go through all the hundred and eighty-five pages?
Oh, it's two-hundred-and-sixty-six, but if you wish.
I only got through one-eighty-five, so.
Well, good evening, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Chuck Komet and I am the emergency manager for Pinnell County. Uh, actually tomorrow will be my fourth year with the county. Um, oh, I probably should ask how I actually work this. Is it just the, uh?
Click the arrows, yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, so like Shane was saying, about a year ago, um, we sent out invitations to all of the fire districts as well as to all of the jurisdictions within the county to ask for representation, to be a part of this planning team, um, to create what was considered a core team of, of people that were going to be renewing the plan that we did in two thousand and nine. Um, the plan that, uh, went forward in two thousand and nine, uh, did get passed out to all the jurisdictions as well as all the, uh, the fire departments. However, uh, there was a misstep within the office, this was before my time, um, that, uh, we did not go back and ask for the concurrence from each of the jurisdictions. So basically, the process of this is the board of supervisors approved it, uh, and then we go back to all of the jurisdictions that are involved as well as all the, um, the state parks and the, you know, federal parks, um, Bureau of Land Management, the Forestry and Fire Management, uh, and of course, obviously, all the fire districts, and ask for your concurrence in this plan. It's not a binding plan. It's not obligating, you know, the cities or anyb, anybody to anything. It's just saying that, you know, we believe in this process. Uh, from this, what we're able to do is seek out different grant funding through Department of Forestry and Fire Management, um, as well as the, the Secure Rule Schools Act, uh, which is part of the Firewise program, uh, and other hazard mitigation funding programs through the Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, um, for things like fuel reduction. So I've got, uh, just a few slides to go over. And, all right. So it is a local plan, um, even though it's a county-wide plan, it's, it's a local plan. Um, the group that came together had discussions with, uh, the firm Logan Simpson Design out of Tucson. They were the ones that did the original plan with us in two thousand and nine. Um, they gathered data from, um, Department of Forestry and Fire Management. If I say DFFM, that's what I'm talking about. Sorry, I use acronyms like it's nobody's business. Um, as well as, uh, other federal agencies, uh, Bureau of Land Management, um, and, uh, National Weather Service. Uh, and they gathered just the data to figure out where our biggest wildfire threats are throughout the county. Uh, and there obviously are some, you know, some up here. Uh, so with that team of, of folks, over the course of eight months, we, uh, we met three different times and, well, four times, including the kickoff meeting, uh, and then had a lot of email correspondence in between to, uh, to hash this out. In particular, to find out what some of our hazards are, make sure that the maps that are there make sense for what's actually out in, you know, out in the real world, and then create some projects that we thought would be good viable projects to work over, over the period of the next five years. Uh, this is very much a living document, so, um, just because a project isn't part of the prioritized projects, uh, that we had in the document, doesn't mean that it isn't something that can come forward. For instance, we did not have anything from Oracle State Park and the state came back to us afterwards and said, hey, can you add this? Of course, the board of supervisors had already approved the document and we would have had to have gone back and re-vetted that. So what, uh, what happens after the plan is fully vetted, um, including the state foresters' office, is that we will then create a, a working group, um, that would meet, uh, and would try to work on these different projects, um, excuse me, that's coordinated through the Office of Emergency Management. Uh, and what we would do in, for example, with Oracle State Park would be to, uh, add a fuel reduction project with them. So, obviously, it encourages community involvement and promotes economic development. Um, the biggest true thing of this, of this document is, is fuel reduction. Uh, there are other, uh, elements and other projects that are in there, but the, the biggest thing that we see, our biggest bang for the buck is fuel reduction. A little close to that. Okay. So as I said, it was first developed in oh-nine. The revision process started in October of last year. Um, and then the board of supervisors agreed to the plan on August eighth of, of this year. And as Shane mentioned, he was part of the planning process, the core team. We also did have Superstition Fire Medical there as well, for your local fire district for representation. And the third bullet is probably the biggest one that I wanted to point out, and the last one, that it does not obligate the city to any policy project or expenditures, that it gives the communities an opportunity to have an adopted plan that you can then use for when you're seeking different grant funding. So this is just a small snapshot of what the many different maps that are in that large document. And that is it. I tried to make it short and sweet, because I know that this is not very fun stuff. We love it, but, you know, I know you guys have plenty of other things to do.
I'll tell you, I moved out here the first time in 1990, when we had a wildfire that came right up behind the Mining Camp Restaurant, and I lived just south of there. And it was the scariest thing I had ever, and people wanted to come and watch. It was the strangest thing. But, you know, you have animals and people at home, and you're trying to get home. And it was really an eye-opener. And our first session at the conference, they talked about controlled burns and how Native Americans used to do that when they would leave an area, and that the controlled burn would not burn the whole tree down. It would just burn the grass, because it was a cooler fire, and how that was a conservation. So this is a great plan that we have something in place.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Could I just make a mention that some of the first phone calls I receive on our flooding night are from Chuck. I want to say thanks to his team in Pinell County for this and the kids as prepared, but also for the regular Office of Emergency Preparities, and Shane and his team as well.
Thank you.
And you have nothing to do with mosquitoes, right? You're, that's Health Department?
No.
Because I'm getting questions on that every day. They are hatching because of the recent rains we've had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
J-12 and 13 can be done together.
Okay. Discussion and presentation of proposed resolution 1827, declaring public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled 2018 Amendments to Apache Junction City Code, and then the discussion, and then the next one, 18-371, discussion and presentation on proposed ordinance number 1462, and these are both with Joel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a continuation from the direction of staff. And actually, you asked that they be brought back for a work session. Excuse my voice, I'm a little under right now. However, the changes... Okay. Essentially, the code needs to be changed, because it's been, it's been out of review since 2004. And so there was a concern by some department heads that the $25,000 limit was a little too low. And so why should the council have to bother with every lower amount, anything above 25 grand? So instead of making it 25 for a procurement, anything above $50,000 is what the council will see. And then amounts under that would be, could be bid differently, going through the city manager. And there's some new exemptions. There's some new language on bid protests and appeal. There's also some new definitions. There was also, at the end, there was a change in the upfront cooperative piggyback purchasing that Public Works wanted to clarify, and they did in the version that I gave you. This was a team effort by every department head, Bryant, Bryant's team, myself, and this started probably two and a half years ago. So there's been, there was some really wonderful debate, actually, on some of the dollar amounts and how things could be done differently. There was a discussion about home preference for businesses. And while we can't outright do that, by taking the lower amount of the procurement less than $5,000, that way, that will help a lot of businesses locally. It doesn't necessarily say, well, you have to, all those procurements have to be done in Apache Junction. However, the bigger departments will probably use that procurement method for local businesses, especially Park and Rec and the Police Department. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer at this time.
Are there any questions? And there's no motion here. It's not clear, like, so...
This will come back for essentially approval in two weeks, or consideration for approval.
All right.
Thank you.
I think that's it, then.
Yep. You've had it before, but it's a continual review and gives you a chance to keep giving us insights.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this was presented to us, what, back in May?
Yes, that's correct.
And we went through it at that time.
You've probably seen it two times at least.
Okay, selection of meeting dates and times. We have a motion on those.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I move an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM, be held on Monday, September 17, 2018, in the City Council Conference Room, City Council Chambers located 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I move an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM, be held on Tuesday, September 18, 2018, in the City Council Conference Room, in City Council Chambers, 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Okay, we have one call to the public. I'm not even going to read the script tonight, and that is Curtis Fonger.
Councilmembers, Honorable Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to be up here tonight. I do my best. I try to be as quick as possible, because Marta said I always take too long, and...
Well, I'm going to waive the three-minute time limit tonight, so...
Well, I think most of you know I've lost my wife 11 days ago. And I think, without question, our world got a little dimmer that day. But one of the reasons I stand here is to represent Marta this evening, and to share some good news with you, which I'll get to shortly. The pancreatic cancer that took her was just three and a half weeks from beginning to end. So it was quick. And in my grief, it gave me cause to think, what would I do to honor this incredible woman that she would approve of? Of course, like so many people, when we lose loved ones who dreaded diseases to give to cancer foundations, heart foundations, whatever it may be, and there's certainly worthwhile foundations. But often, the entire amount doesn't get to the intended cause or target. I just want to give you a little bit about Marta that perhaps you didn't know, and most of you did know her. Marta was born in Buenos Aires, one that has holidays, celebrations, and traditions, one of which was a day set aside to celebrate animals, Animals Day. And it just so happened that Marta was born on that day. It was as if God gave her a purpose. And it's a fun day for people and animals down there alike. People are allowed to take food, fruit, other friendly animal food to the zoo and feed the animals. It was a big deal, but to a little girl named Marta, it was a very big deal. So that kind of began her love affair with animals, all animals. However, Marta particularly loved dogs. She had numerous rescue dogs as a child, which extended into her adult years. And as you know, we were the proud parents of Cody and Kramer. So I thought, why not form a GoFundMe memorial page in Marta's name on Facebook, with 100% of the donations to go directly to our Paws and Claws Animal Shelter, whereby all the donations would go directly and exclusively to help animals with medical, food, care, adoptions, and so on. And to date, the donations received have topped the $7,000 mark.
Oh, wow.
So she's closing in on her goal of $10,000, which I hope to meet. We're very excited about this, and I know Marta is. And how do I know? When Marta could communicate, she took my hand, and she told me, I don't want to go to the People Bridge. I want to go over to the Rainbow Bridge. So I know that's exactly what happened. And even though Marta and I resided in Gold Canyon, excuse me, for the past 19 years, we never gave one thought to boundary lines. To Marta, a dog or an animal in need was her top priority, no matter which side of the line its paws were on. The dogs had no idea where they're at, if they needed help, so why should we be concerned either? In yesterday's Apache Junction Gold Canyon news, a wonderful article appeared about Marta, outlining some of her accomplishments. And I was going to talk about that, but the paper did such a splendid job that it took away, fortunately, some of my speech here. So it was all about her love for animals and our joint communities. She was truly amazing. It didn't matter for her in Gold Canyon, hiking the Olympic Rainforest, camping on Lake Superior. When Marta's phone rang from someone who had lost their dog, she immediately made it her priority and sprang into action, making phone calls, putting the information into the Community Connection website, so that there'd be over 10,000 sets of eyes watching for the lost dog or cat. And on one occasion, she even located four Longhorns that Shelley Donnelly had called Marta of out. So in her nearly 17 years of working to reunite lost owners that found animals, she achieved an astounding 96% success rate. And lastly, because of Marta having been a champion for animal welfare and rights, doing so many things, not only for our citizens and our communities, but for our snowbirds that spend their winter months here, I'd like to respectfully suggest that, and again, I just found out that there's rules and regulations about names, but I was going to suggest that she be given consideration to have a dog park or something at Paws and Claws, something named after her, that Marta C. St. James Center for Animal Welfare, or whatever it may be. So I just kind of threw that in. While I'm sure there are other names worthwhile considering, in light of all that Marta has given over the years, I can think of, yeah, that picture pretty well says it all. Yeah, that's good. That's good, Brian. Thank you. So I can think of no one that has come close to the thousands of hours of time she's dedicated for the protection and welfare of animals over the decades. I know if her name were ever to be used in whatever form here in this wonderful city, she'd be so honored, as would myself and our entire family. Marta never asked for anything, especially recognition. She did these things out of love and her inner passion for, inner passion for animals. What a wonderful heart she had. I'm leaving for Michigan in a couple of weeks to be with my family, to try to heal a little bit. And then, when I get back, it's going to be a memorial service, Marta's memory, out of the Superstition Museum Amphitheater. So the time and date in particular is to be posted in the paper, as well as on Facebook. And I sincerely hope that everybody comes out, and I know you will. So thank you very much for this time tonight.
Would anyone like to respond?
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Kurt. I had volunteered with Marta many, many years ago. That's how I met Marta, was down at the Animal Control Center. And, yeah, she was absolutely a beautiful person, such a kind and caring person. And absolutely, she just loved our dogs, and she is definitely going to be greatly missed in our community.
And, yeah, she's appeared before this council in this room many times, and some of the fondest memories of me being a council member are my interactions with her. And I think it's so awesome that you refer to her in present tense. With that, Chip, are you done?
No, go ahead. I was going to say, the GoFundMe page is out there, and I encourage everybody to do something in her memory, any aspect on it, because she was a terrific person, and I got to know her as well before I even got on City Council and did several things with both of them. Appreciate it.
Kurt, safe travels, my friend.
Yeah.
With that, we will be adjourned.